...order, roll call please.
Eric Al, here.
Eric, here.
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 Notice that this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, Courier-News, and the Star Ledger, filed with municipal clerk, and posted on municipal bulletin board on December eleventh, two thousand eighteen. Please scan for the play. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, the free, honest, and honest, unanimated, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, we are up for presentations. We have Tyler. Um, GP one.
Eric Al, thank you for uh, uh, my name is Eric Al, this is our results alter. Uh, uh, whatever. Tyler has uh, been appointed to burnsville district court in February this year. He comes to us from Rock Hill Park, he's a police officer, he's a deputy secretary, he's also a lawyer. As a special to law enforcement, as a technical support. He has a four-year college degree from Compton City, you know, Compton City University. Okay, you guys can tell me. I have a lot of these office where, I have a lot of these office where, that was part of constitution of the United States. That was a good constitution of the United States, and standardary, and standardary. That will, that true faith that leads us to the same, and that will be a true faith, true faith that leads us to the same. And the government is established in the United States, and in this state, to go and establish a united states in this state. Under the authority of people, under the authority of people, that will faithfully, partly, and justly, and that will faithfully, partly, partly, and justly perform all the duties of the child that's afforded the best of my ability, perform all the duties of the child that's afforded the best of my ability. That will not be my office, and that will not be my office. The man, the man will see that, or see personally, they were in danger, they were in danger, they were in danger. That will also general public, that will, that will, that will, that will. I have been at this center, this area, this area, this uh, all these, you know, you've got a lot of these, you have a lot of them. And also, I have a duty to get people around here, who may have, uh, not too many, you know, my setting back, uh, their dignity, their rights issues, something that any few of these, uh, here, this area, uh, I think, it's, I don't know, it's like, angle, it's all, uh, right. I think this area will be, uh, this uh, this area will be, uh, 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 uh.
You must feel like, it's amazing, wow. Good luck. I would say, do you want to introduce your family to us, just so we know?
Yeah, of course. So, uh, Harold, Regina, Sister Nicole, and girl that married.
Wonderful, thank you all for coming. You have to say, awesome. We understand, we get it. That was a nice comment, that's great. Okay, Andrew, there you are. Um, we now have a legal scout project that Andrew was gonna present to us, that uh, if you could come up and just tell us what it is you wanted to. Um, is that close enough, for the mic?
Uh, you can, uh, let, uh, tell it.
It's, it's a broadcast, it just recorded, so, yeah.
Um, so I just want to thank all of you for being present, uh, and, uh, uh, I mean, some, Sister Nicole, that we passed the majority. I'm part of the issue five five five, that's the majority. Um, inspiring scout, and as far as that, I need to plan next year, and uh, perform, uh, three search products. And for our, I decided to, uh, present the whole ten, one, two. Um, right now, I'm full and, uh, in, uh, shape, um, and I have a little bit of myself, uh, probably, I have a working battery. That's like, dude, I look for you. Um, you can possibly, uh, have a, two thousand dollars, and uh, to fund, uh, your, like, first. And then, you can also see now, as far as camps, as often as you guys have, through the others. And for our, it was around, uh, summer, hopefully, uh, people will all, come home.
Perfect, sounds like a great project, yeah. And you talked to, um, Doug Walker, Mr. Walter, about how it's gonna all work, so you'll probably be in contact with him, so, what do we need to do? Do we need to approve it, or? Anybody have a problem with this? It's great, yeah, wonderful, and I see the, some of the baseball people here, yes, it's good.
That's right.
Great, thank you, alright, good luck.
You know, the volunteers, it's, well, it's like that, and they won't show you on fifty, so, throw them a box if you help, but, you know, you know, one hundred and fifty, you know, you're only showing there, I'm only showing there.
Is that part of the legal scout, is you have to organize people and get volunteers to do that?
Yeah, the volunteers will run there.
There you go. Great, thank you, Andrew, thank you, Andrew. Alright, we now have approval of minutes, um, should we do a separate list, since we have?
We need to do a separate list, I guess.
Um, should I have a motion to approve the minutes of April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen?
Motion, so.
That's all in favor, so, right. Bye. Close? Okay, I have a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion. Right.
You're saying all in favor?
Uh, right.
Okay, very good. Uh, we now have an open public session, with members of the public, mayor, justice council, and actually, we have a second one at the end, yes, as well. Um, so, you'll have another opportunity, at the end, if you wanna stay that long. Um, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, please give your name and address to Anthony. If you're gonna read a statement, please have a copy for the record, so that we can put it into the minutes. And we are limiting, uh, my little time, or five minutes for comments. And hopefully, uh, you know, we'll all be respectful and civil, so, who's first? Alright, come on, come on. Alright, I didn't remember to do this, I always forget to do this.
Oh, hey, Eric Chester, I have a comment on the, uh, representative, I don't think the K service should be included on the office expenditure. This is all right, if they exist in state councils, and, and cover eighty percent of the tax revenue. And limited future council's flexibility to allocate longer, and, and check the situation out of trust fund. Where they borrow, they can borrow from projects, and a percent of the, uh, uh, ready to go on the tax service, and there was no money, so, uh, that's. I think the K service, you know, all, when you make that, and you're gonna cover future tax revenue, and certain, people will cancel, like, actually, it's.
Okay, thank you for the comments. I'm gonna wait for this to, you know. But there was a really quick. Anyone else? Anyone?
Um, I came, to me, to ask permission to go in there, just to update girls, and their parents, it was great, the rest of them, well. Um, there was a beautiful fence, and I think there was a new sign coming to the park, there were grand opening on June the first. Um, we're gonna do woodchests, and companies that donated things, wanting to, uh, ask permission to be able to. We saw, I think it's, we did write the names of companies that donated things, to give them permission, to be able to, uh, do that.
We've not, typically, in the past years, I've wanted to come up, it's. Uh, I don't even think we've found that draft, or anything, on that, usually, we don't show the advertisement. No.
Um, and to tie into the butterfly, and I do know that last meeting, um, you guys pre-ordered, to just actually go back to the, that, 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 for, uh, I just wanna say that. Um, I was really disappointed, 'cause I thought we were gonna give it the full season, and try to try our best to organize, and then, when they already gained, we're gonna get to, so we could come in and do, we're getting, uh, um. And I don't feel that we did a fair chance, I never heard from the guys, they didn't help, like, offer to help me do anything, I just kind of, there was more discussion about it, and I didn't realize once I was going down, it would be, we'd be going down again. So, I kind of decided that, and that's our place, so, it was just, I had to have to change. And just with all the information we have, that we started, and I don't know, like, just like, there's three herbicides, and a second side, and three synthetic fertilizers, all being planned to be applied to these fields. And I'm sure there's going to be catch up, even though it's a difficult application, and I know, I don't want my daughters on the field that this is happening on, and I just don't really like it. I think it's, it's, to allow us to have, on the field, something that, whereas there is a lot of this, uh, stuff, so, I guess, we're, uh, yeah.
Thank you, Rob, thank you.
I have people, based on old army roads in Burnsville, and, nothing right now, but I, um, be able to come and share my thoughts about the decision to do a treatment. And, uh, interior of the fields, I'm happy here that, based on the discussion that that can lead in, and our actions to, uh, um, can, uh, interior, uh, to us. Also, we, and thank you for making a right choice. However, some of the comments that were made, for example, I saw in front of you, and you mentioned that my mother is in permission, um, not on his own. And I think, based on my story, that helps sway your decision. But the comments I heard, including terms like a knee jerk reaction. Your role as council is to deliver the general welfare. So, please consider the general welfare of your citizens, because these items that you're using on the fields, so that you can attract these to a turn, to, 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 so, please, make your decision.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else?
Yeah, so, uh, so, uh, so, uh, um, so, I'm just, uh, Harold, and I work for, uh, for our core, uh, support of the, but just, uh, the street, uh, same, right, so. Um, I'm afraid, I don't have anyone to raise on the, on the fields yet, but, this is my, I'm sure, somehow, that my, this is, uh, like, I just wanted to express my, uh, work with this to, uh, me, and apologize for giving that sequence. From the, I shouldn't have embarrassed you, just go, uh, right on, um, build the, um, but I also just wanted to express, um, my, this, my, in the fact that I, in terms of a little bit of transparency, this thing from, uh, when this issue was brought together, the last week. We wanted to clarify, um, Melanie's state awareness, I'm state awareness, it was any parent, you're the state awareness, how many hundreds of students did Melanie get on that petition, that people are interested in this issue? We didn't have the opportunity to speak her mind, again, and tell her truth, again, and I just, I appreciate what you did, but now, I wish we could have re-visit this issue, and I was, took the original decision, was to ban these pesticides, and, um, yeah, so, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Great.
My experience around our, um, I just asked, as we, like, I said, over the, yeah, um, this time, was like, reporting, on the draft, regarding pesticides on the field. And I am already hearing pesticides on the field, which is not what we agreed to last meeting, we said they were fertilizing, uh, whatever the scale was, right? So, I just asked in the draft, so, you know, you understand each, that is clearly expressed, we're talking about, just, pesticides, pesticides, or letters, I think they're all different, I'm just trying to show that we are all talking the same way. Um, also, another point, talking about zoning, last time, we talked about, some discussions, about zoning, maybe allowing, um, people to rent out, house on that, I don't know if that's part of what's on the agenda tonight. Only that, uh, I hope basically, we were, uh, saying, like, our current laws are enforceable, so why not reword laws around? And just a little discussion through that, like, I did a lot of it in our place, I was confused on why we were changing laws. Uh, it feels like, we could probably still enforce it around the house already, there's certainly some discussions in the past. So, and just, again, is that issue coming back to the front, that, that people are, we're actually talking about, and I hope that we're not just reporting laws to enforce the laws that exist already, thank you.
Thanks.
This is a question, one, 'cause I'm just a little confused, so, regarding the rentals of accessory buildings. Is your perception that we wanted to allow that, because we felt it wasn't enforceable, or? I have a, a little confusion, I, I actually thought I heard something late, but I, you know, very honestly, I was confused, on, even like, the topics, how, uh, what was running, uh, what, like, and, and someone mentioned, or the, you know, I thought, what are the, I had consequences, so, uh, yeah, I had more confusion on my part. But it was almost the perception that I had, and, just, I love, here, like, or, maybe, maybe, um, second, maybe, come forward, and, and see, so.
Well, I think, the issue where it started with, is, um, someone who has an accessory building on the mountain, and had gotten a letter saying it was a violation, 'cause he was renting it. Which is why we, we looked at that again, I don't think it was about, you know, we're not enforcing it, so, let's just let it happen, I think it was more about the safety issue. Is if people think it's, it's against the code, they didn't tell us they have an accessory building, and then we can't expect it to know that it's up to code. And I think it was more about the safety of people feeling comfortable to come and report, I have an accessory building and I'm renting. Um, and that way, you'll get inspected, you'll know it's got meets the fire code, and it was, I think that was more of the, if I got that right.
I can do a little, the, you do, uh, there was actually multiple reasons, I'll just briefly speak, 'cause I, I sit on the House, I'm the landowner for the housing zoning committee. And, um, uh, I originally spoke this to Judge Price about this, because, uh, it made no sense, and frankly, to prohibit it, and I thought, this is something that was prevalent, and I'm glad we were enforcing it. Also, just, I, I've been looking at it, it seemed to be an outdated ordinance, and I think ordinance is a lot of, you look at periodically, to see if they're still relevant, so, it was, uh, I viewed it as a proactive move, and, and the mayor's absolutely right, it had a safety component to it as well. And it wasn't just because we felt we can't enforce it, so let's do away with it.
Yeah, okay, thank you for helping us to clarify, I don't want to have, you know, the wrong idea of your, Jack?
Hi, Jack, I need to say more, I know about the next agenda, this is a discussion that I suppose, on part, maybe, for some number of whole houses, here's a question, uh, I know there's a, all the time, later.
Um, I'm trying to find some sort of comment.
Actually, no need to comment now because it's a resolution, so there's not a public section on, right? We're fully on, yeah, so.
So, my initial.
Resolution.
So, I know that the evidence is satisfying for the public to find, but, um, I was a little surprised to see the part of my neighbors that was on, um, the agenda and I agree with seven of the four of them across five locations in the US. And I'm sorry, we're all, so my question is if a particular piece is approved tonight, does that affect the feasibility of this contract in the building to be further or is there additional public input once any contractors decide in how to do it?
So, Jack, can you clarify, I think there was a legal settlement which has created all this, and this moralizing the selection of a, a company that's going to do the work, it's not really changing what the agreement is, but do you care about it?
That's correct, um, back in the year fifteen, the Supreme Court said, "Come, it's not good functioning," and also they put, um, not all back into the courts. In case these towns have to, uh, defer to the German action, you should try to work out the provision of us. We, uh, entered in a settlement, which is with their share, the expression, "Master of the Land," it's pretty connected, and that was all the moralizing of the German amendment in twenty seventeen. So, all the numbers were established in twenty seventeen. One of the components of it is this scatter sex development, uh, this is a portable, it is a combination of rural, uh, trust fund, maybe collective of years, as well as tax assets. Uh, that she was in government, was a pure head of, when the council of these are used various developers to develop those types of scatter sex at all. Uh, there were eighty responses, there were three to five of us, and they were all about, uh, and the council chose R B M. This is just a moralizing, that's how it's done, is the numbers, the organization to develop.
I think, uh, like, but coming to me, if I understand what Jack's asking is, we approve this particular developer, and they say, "Okay, here's what I'm going to do on this piece of property." Is there an opportunity for the public to comment on the design, or the, or is that kind of just, we already?
There, there really is a great concept, designs were provided, council, uh, for public input, you're analyzing.
Right, so it's kind of.
Like, doing this, it's not formal, it's a agreement, it's our, and then, and because of the, and, you know, everyone's saying, right?
And, Jack, can you clarify our settlement that we were able to negotiate with the court compared to some of the other towns?
Yes, I, I think we're very, we have a little number, uh, because a lot of it is because these, um, some portable units being constructed. Uh, as you mentioned, too, in the city city, um, I think fifty-four, uh, for, and it was, um, hard, um, I think in general, you know, it's not an ideal situation, but, yeah, I don't know.
But, I think another one, and point for the public to mention, too, is if we didn't go to a settlement, uh, in the approach that we took, then we would be owed to what they call builder's remedy. It means a builder to come in without market participation, propose a solution, and we would be forced to accept a number of market rate units, usually eighty, eighty percent of the development, or twenty percent of the number of portable housing units. So, you have a development that is roughly five times as large, if in a builder's remedy scenario, as well as being able to negotiate.
Which is what Fort Hills is experiencing right now.
They have a developer purchase, um, and they do a agreement with the property owner, they're building a hundred apartments, it would be twenty for portable, uh, in the area where we build like fifty-four for, um, and that's what I'm asking you.
Then you have the next thing, probably, right? What's happening down the road with my apartment, so this is obviously effective, it always has a, uh, and also with that going up, and also additionally, probably still getting whatever it has in the rules, um, that's a problem. There, there, we, probably.
Right, now, I think Fort Hills is.
You, you, Hills is a primary example, and those are.
Yeah, that was the first, first big one that got done.
If you're, if you're vulnerable to builder's remedy laws.
Yeah, and I think what Fort Hills is trying to do now is do an age limit on their, on that project in order to avoid some of this school impact.
Like, there's a cap on the, 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 they didn't agree to deal, um, too bad, they had, I think, my.
I didn't know it was fifty-five years old. There's about and yeah, but the examples they gave from like Princeton and like uh Morse Township, Bressman from back or Cheryl can follow up on that with uh for ideas or things that have been done in towns less than ten thousand people. So, you know, to be determined.
Uh Shade Tree, the Shade Tree Committee met on uh May fifteenth. Um two items of importance, one is that um we are in almost finishing revising the Shade Tree ordinance that we hope to present to the council for its first reading at the meeting of June twenty-fourth. Uh the council meeting at June twenty-fourth and uh this is uh driven in no small measure because the ordinance is not enforceable as it is because uh of some gaps in it uh that that just uh makes it very, very hard for our our housing and zoning department to to enforce it. So it really needs a lot of clarifications and we've gone through some uh language, first language changes for that. Uh so we'll have that ready for the council. The second is uh we want to embark on um a tree inventory for the town. Uh it was last done about ten years ago or so, I believe, and uh it's time to do it again. And so the funds have had been secured, um they went to the forester who was the consultant of the Shade Tree Committee and uh we need to move forward on that.
So it's done by professionals, you don't go out and calculate it?
No, I'm thinking just, you know, maybe just-
How much about approximately how much?
Nation name and maybe just, you know, three columns showing that what the numbers would be for each of the five options, six options. Um so-
The June fifteenth, that my understanding is it's scheduled for here, is that accurate?
Yes.
It's on his roll. And if you use the lines from the movie Joss, we're gonna need a bigger ship, you know? We're gonna quote, I think it's a line.
I thought that was your-
Um I mean, just looking, we're almost full here now.
I know.
Uh we're gonna have some people going out to the hall.
I don't know what other venue could we use in high school or?
I have to show you.
(laughing).
I have to say, it's a town only getting the uh recording stuff too, I don't know.
We'd have to read, we'd have to, oh yeah, I wonder if we-
We have that.
Does the advantage here is on tape and then people can-
Where in high schools would we do it?
We did that for the housing lots and then-
The inventory.
Inventory, we were already, we didn't really get the packed house that we thought we were.
Yeah.
We didn't.
Yeah, well, we'll work on that, but right now it's June fifth is the date and uh we'll see if we can find a a bigger venue or figure out a better way to get let people uh have their study might be more online stuff than in person if we can do that. Um, so we mark the June something.
I was um presenting uh for uh um I didn't get it.
Oh, okay. We'll, we'll, we'll get it out there for everybody because it's only, what, ten days, I think, not even till the fifth. A week and a day, so yeah, we need to get this out right away. Um draft resolution adopting a pesticide-free policy. This, we have a sample resolution, is this based on anyone else's to be?
Yeah, it's a game very, um this is very interesting, it's very, um obviously the um organization to be seen.
But we don't, it's not based on somebody else in New Jersey who does a similar policy? Do we know what pesticide-free policy is? Do we have a pesticide-free?
Yes, um I believe I emailed that to everyone earlier, but it's um if you go to Burden's Township website, it's uh it's very prominent on their website. Um and I have part of these, I want to use it. But the one um from beyond pesticides was very, it covered all the bases pretty much and um, you know, that's why I figured if this is the time for us to review and decide what we should include and not include, then it would be better to have more to look at than less, so.
So when does this pool sample come back? What's the turnaround on those? When is it over done? I mean, as far as IPM, I mean, this is pretty toxic and all of that.
Exactly.
So I mean, I don't wanna, it'd probably get all the information in front of us and figure out what, if I get one, who can mitigate it, it's really a thing. If we adopt an IPM that is, you don't need to have the resolution itself, I mean.
Yes, we do.
This, this is an example of what an IPM program would look like, like I mean, the reason that we drafted this, my understanding was that the reason for drafting this was that we we would all know what integrated pest management program looks like and entails. And we would also be able to put together some estimate at some point about costs, about the current program costs and about what the program looks like at the strike here, cost. Otherwise, you know, my idea of integrated pest management, your idea of integrated pest management, it's the same thing. So this was just to stake in the ground, we're not proposing to pass this, we've got to say this is what it would look like if we were to pass it in the future.
Well, this, this goes beyond, this is integrated pest management, this actually reads more like an ordinance than a resolution, which as I understand it, is a sort of sense of council, but uh it it talks about, one of the things that troubles me and I I'm for some of the use of organics, however, this builds into your, if I understand correctly, sustainability coordinator, which sounds very much like a new position and and the framework here and I, I don't understand why we need that.
So that's the kind of feedback I was looking for and I agree with that as well, I don't think, you know, I don't think it requires hiring someone, but I do think that there should be, you know, I would think that that would be um-
Well, I don't understand what you want under integrated pest management, why, why would the program require an additional person? It's just fertilizing, I mean, it's not, nothing changed, it's just a problem.
Right, so I agree that Doug could probably designate him as the sustainability coordinator.
Now, we get an IPM, we go out to vendors and there's a R P out there and they come up with, you know, an approach and based on our conditions, pricing and the schedule and we have presentations uh by one and uh I would imagine we would have presentations by a couple and go out for bids, we wouldn't anything else.
Exactly right.
Yeah. Okay, well, thanks for sharing this, I think, you know, we each maybe go through it and comment on each section, think if it's, you know, yes, this is good, this maybe is too, you know, whatever, if you think if there's too much in there or or we're missing something.
And to answer the question about how long it takes for the core samples, we have that presentation, depending on the backlog of records, it takes anywhere three to four weeks to get the results. So we would like, we would not have those results by the next meeting.
No.
Probably not, no. By the June twenty-fourth meeting.
Probably. And at what point in the calendar year, John, do you go out for R Ps for things like this?
Anytime.
For the fall in calendar year?
Like last year, we did it towards the end of the year, so.
Well, there's, you can do it now, but it doesn't go into effect till the new budget year, really.
Uh probably the fall or-
The next quarter.
Right, otherwise it'd be hard for the whole pricing for, let's say, June, you know.
Okay. All right, uh next, R P.
So what happens next, so the two weeks we meet again, I think it's June tenth, are we considering this as a resolution or is this just something?
No.
Not a resolution.
Right now, we're going to go get core samples for seven hundred dollars, then we come and do that, once they submit to the records, we wait three to four weeks, hopefully less, and if we get our results back, then we can talk about it.
Okay, the reason why I ask Chris is because it's listed on the agenda of items as a draft resolution.
I understand what you're saying, I think that's kind of uh not-
It's a draft resolution for us to review and discuss.
It's a sample resolution, it's called a sample resolution, how's that?
And um I, I'm happy to forward the-
I think it's representative, Jeff.
I'm happy to forward the Burden's Township one again.
Yeah, that would be good, just sure I have it somewhere. Okay, the Driveless Somerset Campaign, um this is something from the um DriveWise people and we had talked about this in the um Mayor's Wellness Campaign Committee and Jeff had a great idea um that we-
Make one for the month.
That's good, no, hey, we like good ideas, um that the council, you know, uh agree to be a team and take the pledge as a team in support of this. And really, all it's about is trying to substitute, um what you do is you register and then you compete in this kind of thing to find how many trips, um you know, it's, say you park at ShopRite instead of getting in your car and driving over to King's, you walk over to King's and you record, there's one trip that I didn't get in the car and drive. Or, you know, you park at the library and walk to different stores you wanna go to, or you walk to work, as some people do, or, you know, and then you just record where you save that time.
How about we compete against each other because I already registered?
Oh, you did?
I can tell you right now, there you go. You know, I already registered as an individual, but you can, you can be part of your work, you can be part of any other group, you can be in multiple groups.
Yeah, because you get to pick, I think, on the registration, you get to pick your team, don't you?
I think that we as leaders ought to take this, you know, we all, we all, we all get leaders, we all demonstrate to do it, so we all have to buy it.
As someone who averages about thirty-five thousand miles a year, I'm gonna give up right now, I'm not gonna participate in this.
That's unfair.
No chance.
But if you read this-
I, I'm just being serious, because I drive a lot.
Um, we can walk to the mailbox instead of driving to the mailbox, you know, the mailbox is down.
You're right.
See? Um I think in this, and what we'll try and do is also put this on the website, so anybody in town, any, any resident can join in on this, participate.
Starts June first, I'm just kidding.
Well, you can register already.
You registered at March two.
Yeah, that's when you have to start recording and it's for the month of June, so we'll put something out, uh maybe on the website, what the link is to register if anyone wants to do that, it's, it's a good thing to do, so.
Who's gonna join Christine in that?
I will.
There we go, there we go, we got four, one more, we got five, come on, I'll give it a shot.
There you go. Yeah, the bell curve is gonna be off.
Thank you for the team, come on.
So there you go, okay. Uh face painting at Kiwanis, we just needed, we need to approve the person that, or their insurance, we needed their insurance.
Did you get it? She said she was bringing it to you.
Yeah, I did get it, yeah, but uh yeah, insurance and all, I was, we had the insurance names in borough, it's just all short and yeah, the council was such a despite motion, just uh.
I'll say, yeah, yeah, um cost of the city.
She volunteered to do it for nothing.
Oh, wow.
Um, but she also runs some of our summer camps, so I think-
Yeah, it's the fairy tale.
Yes, she'll, she'll, um.
So it's really just getting insurance, so can we approve it pending receipt of the proper permission? Yes, okay, so we need a resolution to do this.
That's the most I believe.
Um, what's your? Say, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so that's, yeah, pending that she gets her paperwork.
Okay, just go back to the DriveWise one more time, you don't have to walk, Chris, you actually get points for teleworking, so if you avoided a ride, a trip, could you work alone one day, that counts.
That's right.
You got points for that.
Oh, now that's a good point.
Yeah, I forgot that, that's a good point, yes, now it's starting to sound better, right? Um, swim pool management lifeguards, um I, I don't have any, we don't have anything on, yes, Ralph, that's you.
I'm initiated for this, uh, see, uh, this is really about important to all, you know, how we're doing with uh lifeguarding actually each year, you know, struggling to keep up life, uh, the activities, the current activities, yeah. Uh state has uh actually developed, you know, um guards necessary for certain activities, there's six lanes, I believe the number is to be two guards now instead of one guard, yeah. So that is just added to the problem of staffing for the pool and it's a problem that's happening all around us. Joe keeps in touch with the various of the pool managers and situations, so what uh we were discussing was that we know that there is some outside agencies that um supply lifeguards, so we discussed that scenario possibly, and it's probably the late eighteen this year for that, but we wanted, basically want the council to know that um we made this worthwhile investigation, we do some activities, we're closing, probably uh back to the pool, you know, maybe we'll do it in the coming years. And uh that in fact, we are, we have enough at the moment, but scheduled with the young people are tentative, sometimes the best vacations.
They leave early for college?
They leave early for school, uh those kind of things, they're always existed, uh but we, you know, there, I think there's just a little tighter this year than than what we see. And uh we're discussing on that, the show's continuing, we'll be, you know, what is it done to to staff the property, but uh-
I saw that she advertised for a training they're gonna do there too, so we want to get started.
Yes, yeah. Some uh young people that aren't just getting-
Yeah, that's good.
Asking that for a second, just we-
Yeah.
Do we make them pay for the certification?
Uh, we do and we reimburse, yeah.
Maybe we could reimburse more?
I don't know what it costs anyway. It's a long time ago, like you know, like we're-
Hundred dollars comes along, maybe well, but it's, it's a number that you said it was.
Yeah, but it's true, it's, it's, is it right for certification or so it's not something we can negotiate, I think, is it?
Right.
Are they, um, are these people local or or are they like getting jobs at other towns or they just not getting jobs?
Well, they are, they are.
It was shorter, it's all over.
We have these discussions, we also, uh, I think we were paying ten dollars a day, I gave authorization, we could go twelve, which was some of the other uh these towns offering to to try and, you know, we're doing what we can to get.
We could pay more if we'd be able to get it together.
Okay.
She said they could have the certification.
I hear you, as I, as I said, we, but I think that they have the certification, it's been placed for quite a while, but um, you know, there's a possibility that uh, you know, I do something that we, we were trying to save the budget also.
Right.
Uh, but we, I don't know, this comes up every year, this was a little more, you know, Sarah was more concerned that she had been in the year, so I feel the best that we advise you all that were, I wouldn't say were struggling, but were very uh, were very, paying a lot of attention to this, this happening.
I think this is the most of the pool, just because if you have to close half the pool because of the shortage of lifeguards, because, you know, to me, it's, you know, it has to be closed, you know, it's posted to the pool, because people come in and have the pool closed, because they did, they basically doubled what you need and, you know, it's, I know, because it's, well, it's annoying.
Yeah, and you would have to do that if you were, if somebody didn't show up, you'd have to close it.
That's shitty, you know, hey, it's us, y'all can't.
No, that, that's the law, and yeah, I wanted you all to know that that uh would be a next resort, but it may well happen.
Yeah.
She used some precautionary words, like in the restroom or everyone wants to see if, you know.
You look, you look like you like this stuff, Ralph. You look like you like this, I'm buying you a whistle.
My plate's full.
Is it okay? All right.
Can I just ask a question and maybe if Cheryl's not here, do we have an issue like with kids at schools are training and then working and stop, like, where?
What, what do you mean by stop, that they leave months ago, someplace else, or that they just leave us because they're going back to school or, you know, or, I don't think, I don't think they-
Is it turnover or just?
I, I don't think when they sign up, you know, they, they free work for us, that they, they, you know, they get a higher salary, they, they push, I don't think, I think it's, it's just that, you know, the young people that-
They didn't, they didn't work for us.
I thought most activities, several of the courses, you know, they're down now, they're, vacations are set.
Schoolboy?
Uh, so the schedule's set, you know, so the people have to give, have to touch down, we text out, and they don't like it, we're, we just, we got, so it's very tricky sensitive to get it, but we just have a larger pool and we refill those spots in the court justice, it's just-
Well, and in the fact that we need more, that we'll ever need it, so we, yeah.
We need more than we ever need and uh, yeah, we will do, we will do everything in our power to, to keep everything going, but um in case that, you know, this is something that has to wait, it's got to be closed or whatever, uh we didn't want to lose a blind side if that, if that, you know, happens in this issue.
Always, well, yeah, they're cool. Did they um put anything out at the high school?
Yes, uh Cheryl has, has done that, she's out of ties and we probably just have, uh, John will tell you about the meeting, separate record issues, she's always been talking about it, so. Uh we did, we did discuss, we did, you know, look into some other, you know, management uh situations, so I just wanted to know, we'll uh explore it further, the price of course would be very much higher than what we pay now, so that's also will be a consideration, but that, that question.
Well, can we, can we find out if like paying a little more than that would help?
Sure, sure.
Like if that's in order?
If they take the program in our pool, does that mean they have to work in our pool or do they just get certified and go somewhere else?
Well, well, I don't think it's binding, but that's-
That's the intention, but they don't necessarily have to, okay?
You know, for the ones that do work in our pool, and say-
So maybe if they, yeah, they're residents or they work in our pool, we should, we can first.
If it's a resident who takes the course through us-
Maybe we can do that.
Works for a whole month and we give them three quarters.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, I'm interested in her.
Will probably become to, maybe so.
Some kind of a, oh yeah, incentive.
Be a person at the end of the summer, we can send ourselves, yeah, right, because they'll know they got a little bit of a-
Yeah.
That should be, you know, I don't know about, so, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, later, right.
Lock them in.
Get your security.
Anyway, that's, that's what we wanted to all know, anywhere.
Okay, thank you, Ralph.
Thank you, Ralph.
All right, Mayor's Update, on May twenty-third, I attended the Somerset County Cultural and Heritage Commission's Excellence in the Arts Awards in Greenbrook and um we had someone from the community, Stephen Sands, gave the Excellence in Arts Community Award. It was, it was a great program, we've never been to it because each person that wins has to either perform, like if they're waiting for singing, they did a song, you know, uh somebody played on the piano, they had videos of things that they've done, it was a great program. And we now have, we were missing a person on the community, on the commission, and they did approve Catherine Palmer, who we nominated, so now we at least have a representative, so we'll be getting information from the county on grants and whatever is coming through. Um, we missed, um, actually, I think it was Melissa Provost had sent her uh skills bank and her resume to all of us, but I don't, I noticed Anthony wasn't copied on, so it didn't get into our packet, um but she did ask, she had put in for recreation committee, because we still had openings on there, so I don't know if anyone remembers that. Yes, so we all got that, anybody have a problem with that or we?
No, I would say yeah.
So just a motion, so a motion?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we will let her know that she's, you know, and I'll forward that email to you, I noticed you weren't copying on it. Um, on, just an update on the mural project, um I spoke with the district manager, Sherwin Williams, who is excited to contribute somehow in supplies, materials, either free or discounted, depending on what we need. And um I also got um an email from superintendent um Dempsey that she's very interested in having her art, uh new art teacher on the high school participate and some of the art students, so we're getting a lot of good interest, which brings me to another point, uh I spoke to Jack today and I was thinking in this would be a council um appointed committee, is having a, forming a cultural arts committee, which we don't have at the moment, um a lot of towns do, to kind of take care of these, you know, that could be the group that would oversee projects like this. Um, I've been kind of looking at other towns' ordinances, Jack said, you know, he could research some and maybe you can put an ordinance together and form a cultural arts committee to handle all their, you know, improvements, whether it's music, dance, events kind of things that go on in town.
Good question, so does the mural get sketched and then painted or is it just painted kind of as you?
No, no, it's, yeah, we'll have, we'll approve it before it gets up there.
Till it gets sketched.
Yes, it'll be, uh, but we're trying to do it as, as a community project so that we get input from the community, from other artists, you know, and come up with a design that we actually see and then-
Like more than one design and concept.
There, there, there could be more than one design, like maybe the high school kids will do one, maybe parents for us will do one, whatever, and then whoever's in charge, the artist that's selected, sketches it, supervises whoever's painting it, and that's where the art class could be there or, um, you know, kids from the middle school, parents, anyone that wants to paint it.
It's like a big paint paint number picture.
Yeah, and then the artists come back and clean it up, fix it, and then you seal it, so, yeah, but it'll be, if, if this is gonna take probably a year to get from beginning to end, so we're just now in the process of seeing, you know, who's interested, what it's gonna cost us, who wants to participate, that kind of thing. But I thought having Sherwin Williams involved would be great.
So I'm, I'm not objecting to any of the proposals, I'm just wondering, is there any way to get it done before, you know, during this season, like, or is that not possible?
I don't think so, not if we want to really get as much involvement, I mean, I'm thinking it'll be next spring, I think if we started, because we're almost at summer now and people will be gone, so if we started in the fall with collecting input, get the design done over the winter and then do it early spring.
You, you had a met with the muralist from Astor Ridge, did she give any indication on how long it takes to develop a plan generally speaking?
She said it would be about a year and it was interesting because there were things that she mentioned I never would have thought of is, you know, having police, you know, helping with the traffic if people are standing there, you know, somebody's, you know, you've got kids or whatever, having a, you know, staging area with a tent where you can have material, there's a lot than just standing there, you know, it's a big, it's a pretty involved project, so, yeah, that's why I think it's gonna take longer than we thought. But we're on it, right Christine? Right now, we're trying to get a meeting with the superintendent so that we can kind of see what her level of interest is. Um, just again, we have a special meeting on the fifth to discuss the referendum question. It's a Wednesday. Sorry. Um, May thirtieth, the Somerset County Business Partnership Networking Event is at the Burden's Inn, I know Jeff mentioned he was interested in attending, I don't know if anybody else is, it's ten dollars. Um, but if you want to, um, here's the flyer, if anyone else is interested, we're kind of uh register for it. Um, what else did I have? Oh, and we are getting, Alice, five hundred, don't exaggerate, a donation of five hundred little milkweed plants, so what we're gonna try and do is on June ninth, try and have a work day, a planting day, you know, we'll all meet at the train station and have different places to go and plant them, so we'll be getting a flyer out on that, but I think that was exciting to get five hundred milkweeds for our monarch pledge. So if you know a place that you think would be great, you know, we're looking for different sites where we can split those up and get them planted. Um, I think that was all of my stuff. Correspondents, do we have any?
We have any.
Okay. Um unfinished business, is there anything hanging out?
Yeah, it's not necessarily unfinished, but I, I just had a question going back to the open sessions, like I could, so we had a request that, which I understand we can't do in terms of putting advertising or recognizing donors to the uh, uh, bird flight garden on the fence, we can't do that, but um we, we definitely want to recognize the volunteer, some of the support, is there another way that we can't have any temporary signage or, you know, others compromise a little louder so at least publicly recognize those people who have helped out with the, with the water?
Could we maybe have a sandwich board at the June first opening thing with the names of the companies that supported and donated so that people who are at the opening can say that?
We can leave it up for, you know, a couple of weeks so that if people come in, they'll see it.
Right, I mean, if it's, we do have some advertising in other places, for example, in the ball fields along the fence line, there's advertising, so I understand that's a little bit different situation, but still, I, I just think it's a missed opportunity to recognize people who've helped out.
Yeah, I mean, we should recognize them at our next council meetings as well, I would say, just we could just read out their names.
General list, what that you can give us, and then you go right.
So we could go ahead and create a, or you could go and create a sandwich board that could be used on successful weekends or whatever.
We're just gonna leave it there for a few weeks. We're just, yeah, leave it there for a few weeks.
Good.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's a good idea, Jeff, thank you. Actually, it's your idea, but...
No, I think it's Jeff's.
Well, he started, he set his time for it.
It was a collaboration.
There you go, we collaborate.
Yes.
All right, um, any new business? All right, we are back to a, our second open session, so if anyone from the public would like to say something? Anything else to add?
(inaudible).
Yes.
(inaudible).
Do you want to just say your name or where you live?
It's Joe Ross, one one Prescott.
There you go.
So, um, I don't know, it's hard, because I have my, you know, my office.
Oh, yes, there you go, okay, thank you.
Where we headed with this, where we headed, are we not doing right, by using this set? Um, if it is, or if it is, is to say it comes true, how it's switched, um, knowing it's going to cost a long one, it's back, only organic, practice is that, you can make that call, check that out. All best, we're going to break three different fields, they're all organic, and they have no problems, they're spending a month, like, usually, maybe three, three to four fields in a year, happy, not playing out, and they're trying to grow back. And, uh, we're, we're, uh, we've, we've done it here, we've built an account, we've done a decade, we did it, we got some money for town, we built a field, we're ready to plant, this is the point of planting, it changed the spec, from Dr. Murphy, they went back to organic, and we're making, we're not able to grow a field, it took us two years to grow the spec, they can't see it back, they're all public, they build a root base, they have a field, planted with organic, you have rocks coming through the ground, we had to let us on the, on the, on the, uh, high school field, and got to be able to build a field there, but that's what you have, you will never be able to grow the grass properly, you can see how our fields are deteriorating, and I think that's the way we came up with it, uh, the problem that we had growing the field organic. This is that, we're going to bring back, we're going to grow it, we're able to build a root base, which is so critical, they have administered fields, they have no range, and, you know, a little bit on the edges, but the root base sucks up all the water and feeds the grass properly, creates a cushion, and that cushion protects every kid from a hole or whatever, so we have the same situation here, we have a lower fall, that now is taking water on from this ridiculous field that the county built for us, and that is a awesome way of ending us, it's exposed in dirt, it's exposed in stones, we have, that field is being treated, listen to that, we had the same flat six inches of root base, growing green, protecting, sucking up the water, until we eventually get there to have the money to start reening these fields properly, if I say please, it's all, all that, from what I've been fed, um, different people sending in information, I'm here, our company has three murals, we have twelve year old information, we need current information, and some of the things we've got, agent, we're, it's all the stuff that they use, you know, it's each one.
What information's all there, what, what information is all there?
The, uh, who's the, the, who's the murals that, uh, are bringing, you're bringing the data, that's supposedly the source of all...
With the M S, the M S D S boards, or the M S D S?
Yeah, why aren't we getting the right information, why aren't you as a council, having Dr. Murphy come here for Rutgers, one of the top guys, you know, grass fields, hasn't been talking about, totally just hearing this, this situation is going on, what happened with the turf field, and not building to the spec that we had, and not building the hundred year storm breaker, and it's being, I guess, there, I guess everybody in here has to communicate, there's not a million of you about this concept, and we allow a field to be built that's going to be a nine year for the rest of our lives, we don't deserve that, we only have a few fields, and those fields could be dolled up by the, by the, by the corporation, which has a forty million dollar budget cost, and now our kids have to pay for that, they have to pay to play on that turf field, which is so unbelievable, we donate it and we have to pay for it. Our residents, our members, and everyone, they have to build, build schools, so, how much did the others send, just like, I can invest here, very little, we're losing everything as a town, we've earned that money for our debt, and it's on share, and now, now we have a silver ball, so they have less fields, and no one's considering that, I haven't heard of it, why aren't we able to use that field now? The president of the board has said, because someone here convinced her that we're going to take their business away from collecting here, that's immoral, why should we worry about that? We should worry about getting our kids on that field every time it's open.
You all copy, I'm good.
So, then we have another situation, we have a fall, we know, look at that slide, we allow a community to grow there, and they buried a French training that ran right to that lower section, buried, but he can't pop it, we sealed it off, so there's no water from, now all that water is running back in the field, they blocked the water from running into the extension, when we designed, uh, having that, we went back and redesigned it, and we put new height and now fall, so that we had all the drainage in place to, to train, uh, 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 chessmen, when we're ready to build it, and here we are, that's like, um, having that not being fed, fed by a sheet, the lower field's not being taken here, we can't get on the upper field, baseball, baseball time, is, is that's unusable, because we have kids in the roster that have to play in that, and they took away a third of our field, grass area that is ours, and also it took a hundred and seventy-five of those tops, that we took on, on the other jobs, and screened and printed in wood, so we can go back and re-dress those ones, where are we headed here? We just got, problems, more problems for our schools, for our parents, our kids in the future.
Thank you, thanks, Joe. Anyone else? Mark?
Um, just a question about the, uh, development agreement, uh, with the, is that available, uh, available to the public on the website, or what have to make a, uh, prior request?
You, yeah, you just posted it.
(inaudible). Uh, all, all, it's, it's, I'm trying to, uh...
Yeah, it is on our website, so I think you found the link, it's on there.
Yeah, yeah, I, 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 it was on the website, right?
Yeah, yes, for it. Are they all there, the three different proposals, or is just the one that we've selected there, do you know?
There were, I'm not sure if it's still...
Just the one, is there?
Yeah, there is, I mean, but I found out there were a number of, uh, sites, and then some of those sites, I don't know if they all, and, uh, decided on or not.
Three have, so there were three of them.
Three approved, oh, they were all there, okay. Anyone else? Good? All right, I will close the public session, um, we could have, I'm the store executive, yes? What do we do?
I, I can say that one.
Okay, um, so, Chris is moving to go to executive session.
(inaudible).
I have to come back out to executive session.
We're coming back?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I just want to know that.
All right, so we'll be back if anybody wants to hang around, but, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so, we are now in executive, quick break.